Okay. It's 9:03. Let's start the Crow Wing County Committee of the Whole meeting. We're all present, starting at with Gina Hire and Bethany Imgren, Public Health Foundations. Come on down.
I don't know nearly as good, but.
Good morning. I'm Gina Hire.
Hi Gina.
I am the manager for the Public Health Division at Crow Wing County. And I'm talking to you today about foundations of public health and the cost and capacity assessment that was completed for the state of Minnesota. So we'll start there. And if we could move forward one slide?
Thank you, Habla.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or can we do that, Courtney?
Yeah, I can do that. This is our public health team. We've had some transitions recently, which you may have heard about, but this is our basic team. We have six PHNs in public health who work with WIC, Women, Infants, and Children, and our family home visiting programs. We have one registered dietitian, a nutritionist, and three health educators, two case aides. That is our current team, and our supervisor is Bethany Imgren. And she is part, her position is part of what we were able to establish through the foundations of public health funding, which was absolutely fabulous for the Public Health Division to start growing. And speaking directly on.
I don't think we can.
Okay.
I'm gonna pull up the power.
Foundations of public health, that funding that I'm going to discuss, came about through a combined effort of LPHA, the Local Public Health Association, and SHAC. Those two entities together looked at Minnesota as a whole and our foundational capabilities and realized that we have some work to do in Minnesota to build those capabilities. What they did is they complete, worked with the University of Minnesota and completed a cost and capacity assessment. That was completed in 2022. And what that did, it analyzed through hundreds of questions that were directed to our local public health team in regards to what capacities and what areas were we lacking and where were we really succeeding? This money then is meant to be focused in the areas where we can see more growth. So that's what we are working on currently. We had a plan going in when we knew the money was coming. We started planning immediately for that, even though it was a little late and they were a little late in letting us know the actual amounts we were going to receive. Can you move forward?
No, I think we can do it.
Okay.
You have to be able to mandate it for work and then another stream.
Okay.
So we'll do it.
Thank you.
Bethany, while there's a pause, would you like to come up to the table? Okay, come on up. I'll switch your spots. Now the real Bethany is here.
Okay. This framework for the foundations of public health, this is a national framework, which was then adopted by the state of Minnesota, and it outlines for us the essential activities that we, as a state, either at the county or the state level, need to take on responsibility for public health to keep our communities safe. And it goes through, here you can see the foundational areas, which are the basis, the structure of public health. We're looking at communicable disease control, chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental, public health, which you've seen a lot more of that at the last couple of board meetings, with our public health nuisance work that we're completing, maternal child health and maternal child and family health, that envelops our family home visiting and our WIC programming, and also access and linkage to clinical care. That's the basic structure. Through that structure, we have the foundational capabilities that we must achieve below, and that is what we are, we are working on here. Emergency preparedness and response, you can see that in the very bottom. The team responded to the last disaster with the tornadoes and such. That was, we had a public health response, which was immediate. Communications, I'll start at the beginning with assessment and surveillance, community partnerships. Just an example of that was, I know some of you are involved with Crow Energized, and I am co-chair of the Crow Energize Committee, so that's some of the work that goes into there. We've also got equity, organizational competencies. That's where we found we needed to strengthen here at Crow Wing County, is in organizational competencies, policy development and support, accountability and performance management. We do a great job as a county with, with a lot of that already that's built into our structure, which is fabulous. Emergency preparedness, and then communications. This framework is a forward-thinking framework for the state of Minnesota. And as I mentioned, it all falls into Minnesota State Statute 145A, which is frequently referred to for anything with public health. So if we look at the, if you wouldn't mind moving forward one. Foundations of public health funding, we've received this year, annual amount of $188,716. This is very similar to the local public health dollars that we receive. Although they are separate, there's a lot of crossover between these two pots of funding. As in, just like the local public health dollars, we are required to have a 75% match with the foundations of public health. And our current funding with $188,000 runs through from January of 2004 until June of 2005. So they, because it was a slower rollout, they're giving us more than a year to spend that amount of.
Did you say '04 and '05, or '24 and '25?
'24 and '25.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just, I.
Sorry.
I mean, did I, did I miss it, or was?
Nope, it was incorrectly spoken.
That's why she, thank you.
I got you.
Okay. And if we can go ahead and move forward on that one, that's fine. Our base annual funding for this is very similar to the other counties in Minnesota, which is $115,000, was allocated to all of the communities that fit the criteria. That $115,000 is then supplemented with additional funding based on the social vulnerability index for Crow Wing County, as well as capacity.
Are these all dollars that come in, or how many dollars do we have levy dollars put into this also?
Well, right now, these are dollars coming in. That's the amount that comes in for us. We do have to make the match for those, for 75% of those dollars, just like we do with local public health, which has never been an issue. Well, at least since we've been working together here. The match is something that we can make. Other questions?
I have none.
Okay, you can move forward if you would please. So in planning for this additional funding that we knew was coming, although we did not know the exact amounts, we knew some areas where we needed to build capacity at Crow Wing County. One of those areas is our, we found was in the environmental health arena and what our work that we do with public health nuisances. That had been kind of an addition to other positions, and it was continuing to grow and expand, and our needs surrounding that, we found that we were needing a full-time equivalent to serve in that position. And that is where we hired Kelsey Stoltz. And Kelsey currently is a health educator here at Crow Wing County. Most of her hours are dedicated to investigation, determining and managing for the public health nuisance, is additional education for the community, coordinating with outside and inside, internal agencies such as land services, the attorney's office. She's made a lot of wonderful connections already this year, and we can, we can see that that is going to continue to grow. She is very well-versed in communication, as that's her background, and she has taken on additional initiatives related to that. So if we can move forward one more, that would be appreciated. Okay, so far this year, public health nuisances, you've probably heard a little bit about them at numerous meetings this year. And this is a spreadsheet, this is part of what we were also able to implement with the foundations of public health funding, is a spreadsheet like this, which is powered through Power BI. And we did have one of our case aides trained in that. We are looking at expanding the use of this program throughout public health to better provide a visual definition and description of what we have going on in our programs. So if you, if you look here, this is looking at 2024, so far this year. We've had 26 total reports. And you can also see the majority of those reports are, for public health nuisances, are coming out of Brainerd and Marfield. We've got it divided up by zip code and by the concern. Not all of these will come in front of you. Many of them we were, we are able to handle and resolve with the resident or whoever the complaint came through. So some of them that rise to yours are the ones that we denote as a public health emergency, which needs immediate attention, such as septic not working, something similar to that. Go ahead, sir.
Gina, so, like, are you guys, actually, I'm glad we're talking about this, because this is like something that's become, I've become very passionate about, cleaning up some of this bad stuff. So how do you guys, how are you trained to go out, you know, I mean, there's a lot of, oh, I'm sorry about that. There's a lot of places where you go and it's, it's kind of just junk. It's not really a public health nuisance. How do you, either one of you, how do you like say, yep, this is a public health nuisance and this is not a public health nuisance?
So we're working really closely with land services on a consistent basis so that we can have those discussions about where our lines should be and how we can coordinate and do better. A lot of times when we see public health nuisances, they are intermixed with the junk. If you have, let's say, a spring mattress and all we have is just the springs, just the metal part, it's not a public health nuisance, but it's certainly junk. If it has the mattress padding, any kind of material that can soak up water or have an animal live inside of it, well, then that's a public health nuisance. But how do you separate out when you have the junk and the mattress all, all together? When we go in and clean up public health nuisances, we have a contractor, he's got big equipment. If he goes and grabs that mattress and he also grabs some junk, it goes. But typically speaking, we will be, be looking for those, those public health pieces, and then what remains, we then will turn back over to land services and they come in and do their cleanup process. So that's kind of how we're working together to resolve the entirety of the properties and still stay in our own lanes.
So one other question. So this, it says on the agenda, it says, "Public Health Foundations", that is foundations, isn't it? What, and what does that mean?
The foundations are, in the previous graph a few back, it showed, the foundations are the building blocks for which public health stems from.
Oh.
So it, it is communicable disease prevention, it's environmental health, all of those, working together. So those are either things we need to do at, some of, although it tells us what the foundational capabilities and the structure is, it does not tell us exactly who has to do those. Some of those, activities are denoted to the state, while, while others are our responsibility at the county level.
So sometimes land services might call you up, you might go out there and you might, they, they're hoping that you'll say, "Public health nuisance," and you'll say, "No."
Correct.
And then, then it's just, it's back on them to try to figure out how to, okay.
That is correct. It has to be, it has to be determined to be an issue for the safety of the public, to be a public health nuisance.
But if you see like oil and.
Yep.
And stuff, anything, I mean, if you see it, you know it.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a similar.
And even standing water, although that is usually, normally, maybe after today, we'll see more, that is normally something that can be remediated quite quickly. Buckets of water, tip them over.
Yeah.
You know, we will go in and just speak to the residents who are, who are living there, the owners, property owners, and we, some of that can be remediated quite quickly and will not rise to the level where it needs to come in front of you.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
One more question. You know, eyesore is the eye of the beholder, though. You know, when you have eyesore up there, and I see you've got that listed. And right now, you're only showing 20, 26 requests, or whatever it is that you have up there reported, 20, 26 reports. Not a big number, considering we got 70-some thousand people in the county or 70,000. But, you know, an eyesore could be, you know, for somebody, could be a row of tractors, but for somebody else, they wouldn't look at that as an eyesore. So how do you, how would you go to land services and sit there and say, "Oh, we consider this an eyesore." What does our ordinance say on eyesores? I don't know if there is an ordinance on eyesores.
There is not for public health. There is not.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that would be a better question for land services. However, certainly you are correct. It is in the eye of the beholder to some aspect, but we do, we do respond to them, and we do talk to the property owners, and we do education dependent upon what we find. Again, just kind of educating on what we know we can, we can do to improve it.
Okay.
And although 26 total reports, this, the actions occurring with public health nuisances in the community have received media attention. And due to that, we have seen quite a large increase in the number. In 2023, for the entire year, we had a total of 29 reports.
For the whole year.
We're halfway through the year right now, and we're, we are already at 26. So we have seen that grow. The year prior, I, I don't remember the exact number, but it was also quite, quite lower. So as we see our response to this be successful, we do anticipate that there will be more activity surrounding public health nuisances. And not only the nuisances, but we want to do preventative work, and that's part of what Kelsey does. And some of the initiatives that I'm going to get into next are in relation to that. Forward, actually. And successful initiatives since hiring Kelsey as our health educator. Move forward one more, please. Do you want to talk about these? Okay. We've done, she's also working on injury prevention, which is part of the foundational basis of community health, fire safety, and fire letters. So she has been working in tandem with the local fire chiefs, and we are currently getting a list of burnt structures, homes that burn, and then Kelsey can go out and educate and speak to the, the family who went through that tragedy and try to assist them with their needs, especially surrounding the cleanup and what needs to be done to keep the community safe after a fire. In addition to that, as her prevention work, she has connected with the local fire departments, and she has secured with the Red Cross the ability to provide free smoke detectors to our residents, and she also provided our staff and community services with training, those who wanted to attend, it was not mandated by anyone, or by everyone, but those who would like to attend to be able to be certified to place those smoke detectors in the homes of their clients. They are now able to do that, and many of our clients do need that. We have elderly clients who it may be difficult or for them to leave the house, even get batteries, the smoke detectors are then delivered to their house, and then we install them for them, and then provide additional fire safety at that time. So that is one of the larger initiatives that we've been moving forward with. Anything else I should speak on on that, Bethany? Do you want anything to add?
No, I think it just shows a lot, a lot of good faith on our part, too, when we go out and respond to these homes that have had significant structural damage from fires. You know, our, rather than our approach being, we're coming in complaint-based to get ahead of that and be able to build a rapport with the family in, in hopes that we can avoid ever having to come to a point where we need to do a cleanup.
And just moving more forward one more, we are addressing communication and education, another foundational capability with public health. And we have started, Kelsey has secured WJJY, Community Focus, placements for quarterly, where she will go in and discuss some of this on the air, which will be great for prevention and promotion of the services that we do provide, and how to dispose of items such as mattresses, which can become a public health nuisance. She also presented, and Bethany presented to the Crosby HRA residents on healthy home practices, and they presented at the state level regarding public health nuisances because Crow Wing County was recognized as someone that was forward-facing with this and making progress, and the work that we've done here over the last three years was shared at the state level to hopefully be replicated.
That conversation will continue hopefully this fall with another session on, on public health nuisances, where Kelsey and I can help speak with others across the state in learning more about how we can be more proactive from a public health standpoint.
Are there questions for us surrounding foundations or public health nuisances?
I have just one. When, you know, go back to your slide where, I don't know what number, page eight, if you don't mind. When you look at rental concerns, is that rental concerns from the tenant? Or would it ever be from the landlord?
I don't know that we've received landlord calls. Have we received many of those? It's more tenants and neighbors.
I've had one. It's very interesting. You know, I think if you, if you have a landlord where they're running into issues, where they're having issues with a tenant and it is a public health nuisance.
Oh, yes.
I've only had one. It's rare that they would call us.
I know, I just, I just, but I, I see when you look under zip code, you know, you look at, you know, half of them are coming from the, the 56401 zip code, you know, so it's.
Yes, which is why Kelsey has been attending some of those landlord meetings, is just to meet and discuss.
Yeah, I would think there would be some help needed there. So, okay. That's, that's all I had for either. I don't know if that was a question or a comment, so. Anything else from the board?
Think you're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're raising the bar.
Appreciate it very much.
I, for one, want to see, you know, I mean, I want us to be more and more aggressive on cleaning up some of these places. And you didn't mention anything about zip code 56456 or anything, did you?
No, I don't think 456 is in there.
It is now.
I know that.
It is now. No, good job. You guys are doing a great job.
Yep.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Totally appreciated.
Ever since I closed the post office, we don't have that zip.
Oh, you don't have that zip code anymore?
One neighbor, no, one guy, one guy still wanted it and, and was box one and uses that zip code. Next.
Thank you. I'll just give you a quick side note. So the public health team responded to the storm damage up in Ideal Township the day after the storms, and the comments of appreciation that we got for us being there and assisting with any needs. There were even some tears shed from some residents up there thanking us for just checking in on them and making sure that, that they were doing okay. And so really, although unfortunate, really good PR for public health. So today, we're going to talk about mandated versus non-mandated. We come to you with this information annually. April has done one heck of a job compiling all of this information. All the kudos and credit goes to her, and she's going to walk us through the report that's in front of you.
All right. So you'll remember the state or federal government mandates, we provide certain programs or services. So this is to give you kind of an idea of the financial impact of the non-mandated services we provide, and also so you can see the costs to the taxpayers of the mandated services. And these are the actuals for 2023. Keep in mind, timing can affect the bottom line. Some of the reimbursements are received upfront, and the expenditures come later. Other times we're reimbursed after we have the expenditures. The parentheses means we brought in more revenue than expenses. So you can see there at the bottom of the first page, the 392,000 non-mandated services for 2023 actually brought in more revenue than we had in expenses. You'll also see the breakdown of FTE by program and also by mandated or non-mandated services. Do you have any questions so far? Digesting a lot of information, a lot of numbers? All right. Let's move to the next page. This is our income maintenance programs, and all of the services provided by the income maintenance unit are mandated. The county cost is about 24% of the total expenditures.
I, I did have, I did, I'm just combing through this. And so one question is, the, on the first page.
Mm-hmm.
ARPA court backlog agent, is that completed? Have we caught up with the backlog? Are we ever going to be caught up with the backlog, or?
So the, the backlog is getting completed.
Then what happens once the, you know, it's just, it's ARPA dollars, ARPA dollars is a one-time.
Correct.
Dollar. So then, then does that go on the levy then, or what?
So that.
Good question, too.
I was gonna say that, but then I wasn't, because you always tell me I say that. So the court backlog is getting caught up, yes. However, we have a lot of work with assessments, PSIs that we do, or that Corrections does for the courts, that have not gone away. So Kay Wilson used to be doing that work. She was moved into a supervisor role, and Kayla is doing that work now, and that work will continue, and that's mandated. That's work that we have to do. So we're actually discussing how it will look with allocating the Corrections ARPA positions into the 2025 budget, because that work isn't going away, and it's mandated that we do that work. So.
Don't forget, the county board wants a 299.
Yes, sir.
Levy increase.
We're very clear on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we can talk about that a little more as we, when we get to the Corrections section.
When they say state mandated or county cost mandated services, that's what the state is mandating for us to do.
Correct.
They give us a CPI or CPA, whatever it is, to do those services, or are these ones, what falls through the cracks and ends up being on our levy?
So let's look at each program. April has broken it down by program area, and I'm hoping that that will, each of those will answer those questions.
It's a lot of numbers.
But you're right in terms of like the Corrections, for example, although we did get a pretty nice increase for Corrections this last legislative year, there are still things that we have to do, like PSIs, that are not funded necessarily, or they haven't been in the past. So that's one example.
So looking at the income maintenance programs again, the 2.1 million is the county cost of, of the, after all, reimbursements are received for running these programs. But once again, they're all mandated. And in that medical assistance, federal-state reimbursement section, that does include about $470,000 we received in 2023 to help with the MA eligibility renewals due to the public health emergency ending, and we have not, we're, the plan is to expend that over the next several years. So can keep that in mind.
And I'll just note that, you know, oftentimes folks think that, oh my gosh, we're paying welfare moms to sit on the couch and eat bonbons. That's, these programs are actually one of our least expensive programs with SNAP, for example, or TANF, those types of programs, where we see our biggest expense is in the medical assistance arena and, and those folks who have significant medical expenses, those on waivers, that type of thing. We are working on a top 20 report that I'll bring you in the coming months related to the top expenditures in these different programs, and you'll see that it's mainly related to healthcare-related expenses.
So Mr. Chair, if you're looking on that first page there with the income maintenance breakdown that April went through, you can see in that very first column, she has it broken out by program throughout, but then that very first column shows you the total amount of the expense, the amount of revenue that you're getting in reimbursement from federal or state dollars. So the levy portion of income maintenance costs us $2.1 million.
Right, yeah.
So we're seeing that county cost line, that's going to be what you're considering your levy, your levy cost.
So a big, big ask, but is there an opportunity to give us a five-year, like a four-year look back and in the current year, to kind of keep track on, on how many of these, or the cost that it's costing the county taxpayer because they mandate it and don't give us full refund, or?
Full reimbursement.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, kind of going along with what Nancy has, is, you know, what we're doing. we're doing, um, through countywide with our five-year projections here that will kind of help, help you to see what we are doing.
Can you do a look back, April? Can you provide the last five years?
Previous five years.
Previous five years that would give you that trend data. So you can show we were previously getting X percent reimbursement. Now we're getting, either it's increased or decreased.
Right.
What's been the hit that we've taken on that levy amount over the course of time?
I think that's, I think that's an excellent idea. Then if you could pinpoint something and say something's wrong here, you know, I just kind of like I was just looking on here, um, just a curiosity thing is get county burials at 180,235 dollars. Just curious on what it was ratcheting down the last five years, if it's on the rise, you know, I think it was helpful for us as the policymakers to make decisions when we know if something's increasing and, and we can ask why.
Absolutely. The only thing that might throw us off a little bit are, is COVID and the COVID dollars.
How do you net the COVID out of that?
Yeah.
And there will be some shifts that are coming because of new infusion that you got, particularly like around corrections.
Yep.
You talk about the fact that we have new census numbers that have directed some of these changes to it, but it will at least give a little bit of a starting point. So you can kind of see what that trend has been.
We'll send that to you in an email.
Good. Thanks.
Uh, so any other further questions on income maintenance? I guess another thing that kind of plays a factor into the programs is, is the public health emergency. More people were qualifying for programs and not having to do the renewals. So.
So one other question to Kara, just, just another before we move on. So when we say, like Deb just said, that, uh, 2,136,000, that is not the, uh, how am I going to say this? Um, community service, their levy impact is on the, is way more than that. It's, this is just this portion.
Correct.
Right?
Just income maintenance.
Yep.
That's just income maintenance part of it.
Do you know what, right off the top of your head, what your levy was for last year? For, out of the, I think we were at 44 or 44 million? What would your portion be of that?
Around 10, 10 million?
10 million?
Around 10 million something.
We actually came in pretty low with our levy amount last year.
You had a lot of new funding sources that came in in 2020.
Corrections funding really helped.
Corrections funding really, uh, reduced the amount of community services levy. There was a lot of shifts that went with new money that came out of the legislative session in 23 for the 24 budget year.
We may have been at a negative levy, I want to say.
It might have been.
Yeah.
What?
We might've been at a negative levy, I want to say.
No.
I'm going to find that data for you.
Okay, the next page. Family services, um, the non-mandated portion, um, within the family services division is our family preservation work and the CIBS work, um, within mental health. Um, you can see that the family preservation, non-mandated work, um, brings in a lot of revenue through targeted case management and PSAP, parental support outreach program that, um, more than covers the expenses. Um, and that 4,700 under children's mental health, non-mandated, that really isn't a levy impact. It's just a timing issue of when we receive the reimbursement for that CIBS program.
So this is our work with, um, child protection and that, those types of mandated services in that area. And I can say that the non-mandated work, um, brings in a lot of revenue and we really believe that because of this non-mandated work, we've really been able to bring down the out-of-home placement budget too. So thank you for your support and, and helping us do that.
Another question on, on personal care. I don't know if you, what do you call them? Personal care assistant, assistants or?
CAs.
PCAs. So do you ever find any fraud there where somebody's just saying, well, I'm taking care of grandma, but then they're really not? Do you ever, is there any way to look for fraud?
Um, oftentimes, um, we're not in the home all of the time, but we may receive an adult protection report that someone isn't being, um, taken care of appropriately or there's a misuse of their funds. Um, so sometimes we do see, um, that. It's not, our out-of-home or our adult protection numbers have increased over the course of this year. We can certainly bring you an update as to what we're seeing, um, in that line of work as well and address that question specifically if you'd like us to.
And then when these people are getting a personal care assistant, when, when they're getting paid, is that, is that, is that levy dollars or is that state dollars? Or how are they getting paid to take care of their loved one?
So sometimes it's on a waiver. Sometimes it's on a waiver, which would be state dollars. More than likely it's state dollars. But we'll, we'll bring, um, a presentation to you about all of that at a upcoming Cal.
And Mr. Chair, Kara was correct. They did have a negative levy increase or a negative levy decrease, if you will, in 2024. The 24 levy for community services went down 3.78%. The 24 levy was 13.1 million.
It's by, by going out there and getting those other programs and bringing those in.
Yeah. It was the additional dollars mainly for corrections that put us up and over.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was with, um, almost $2 million worth of levy increase that came mainly through new legislation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Anything else before we move on to adult services?
Thank you.
All right. And within adult services, the non-mandated work, um, includes the ARPA law enforcement liaison, um, liaisons. There's, you increased that to two. Um, the social workers working in the jail, community living infrastructure, um, and those working on M-Show chore and waiver services. Um, that M-Show is within the adult services, the last, very last column there. Um, so you can see they bring in a, a lot of revenue there to more than cover their expense. Any questions?
We're working on some ways to fund, um, for example, Anna's position in the jail as our mental health, uh, social worker. Um, we have some potential funding sources, um, that we're going to be utilizing for her position. Um, so we're hopeful that that will help, um, the overall levy impact, um, in the coming year. So we're always looking for new sources, um, to help cover the costs.
All right. And then health, um, our health programs have generally, generally been break even. Um.
What does it say on the top corner, Paul?
Adult Services.
Okay.
Just not to be nitpicky, but I, on down the ways of transportation, um, it says non-mandated looks like $4,664. What, what is that paying for?
So that's paying for folks to get to treatment, um, um, mainly. And you recently approved allocating $50,000 of the, um, opioid funds to help cover those types of expenses to get folks where they need to be related to transportation.
Example?
So let's say I need to go to treatment, um, in Southern Minnesota for substance misuse. If there was a bed open down there, for example, and, um, that was the type of treatment that best fit both my substance use disorder and my mental health, um, issues, then we could pay for transportation to get them down there to, um, attend treatment. We're hoping that.
This is one of those things that we're really not, the county citizens are not really responsible for, but we're picking that up.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes.
But we're using our opiate, in this case, we're using our opiate funds that we are getting from the state.
We will be.
To, to cover that cost.
Correct. We haven't up until this point.
But it doesn't really, no effect on levy. On that item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, back to health. Um, I guess I, you can see health brings in more revenue than the expend, than expenditures. Um, some of this is due to timing. Um, for instance, COVID, uh, that's just a timing issue. The expenditures, um, were in 2022 and we received the money in 2023. Um, federal infrastructure was new money in 2023 and that's also a timing issue. We just haven't been reimbursed for, for that yet when, um, during, we were reimbursed for that 23,000 in 2024. Um, and like EBHP, that last column there, uh, we had a lot of additional revenue there in 2023 and some of that is due to more families were qualifying due to the public health emergency and also the health plans, increased reimbursements.
So on that one, uh, evidence-based home visiting, can you define that for me? I don't, I don't understand what that means. Evidence-based.
Probably up here.
You gotta come up to the mic.
I'm at, I'm at here. Sorry.
So I'm looking for like, what, what evidence or what, what does that mean?
Evidence-based is a program that we follow, which is, is the mesh, it's called the mesh program. And it's a program through the state that we deliver to the citizens, uh, moms, babies in our community to help, um, prevent, um, anything from difficulties during their pregnancy to a healthy baby. That's what we're looking at. And some of the reimbursements that we would get back for that, if you're interested in that piece, we do developmental screenings, which we are reimbursed for at different stages of development for the child. And that way we know we are, um, referring children for additional assessment by a specialist or a provider to make sure that they are able to, um, continue their development according to their age and with appropriate, um, interventions to make sure that happens. We can then identify if there's maybe an issue early on. That is the goal. We also do, um, depression screenings with moms because if mom can't care for herself, how is she going to care for a child? And we all know, uh, the difficulty that depression and those kind of, uh, other mental illnesses can put on a parent. Um, that is part of it. There is a lot of education that is involved, um, with that program that our public health nurse goes to the home, meets with mom where she's comfortable and can provide that counsel, guidance and education in a comfortable setting with her and baby.
Okay.
We're also utilizing our family home visiting, um, program, um, to work with, um, potential child protection families before they go into deeper end services. Um, so working with them to get them on the right track, um, so they don't end up costing more money, um, that way. And you can see with our, uh, family home visiting that we are bringing in more revenue than the actual program costs, which helps to offset some of the work for child protection that's mandated and does not receive funding.
Well, when you say evidence-based, I mean, are you trying to unearth the evidence and prove that you are, are, uh, the program is working? Or I mean, is that just the name that came up?
Evidence-based is the program. Um, the, the program itself, the mesh program is based in evidence. So that educational curriculum and the assessments and the education we're providing to mom has been shown to be effective.
Ah.
So it's an evidence-based program.
Now that makes sense. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on to corrections? All right. So here is where you'll see the impact of that additional CCA subsidy money we, um, received starting in July 2023. So, um, for 2023, that had an impact of about $600,000 to the levy. So our total county cost was 613,000, $820. That was due to the additional subsidy money received. Um, and all of our positions within corrections are mandated other than the domestic violence agent that is currently funded through ARPA.
And the, the DV agent is working on pre-trial. So before an individual is sentenced, um, our domestic violence agent is making sure that they are either getting into treatment or attending their court appearances, um, seeing a counselor, those types of things. And we found, um, I don't have the percentage in front of me today, but I can get that for you, significantly better compliance, um, in meeting the requirements of the court from the time of, um, they're arraigned to the time that they go to their next court appearance, um, which is a big deal when we're talking domestic violence and supporting, uh, individuals in the home that have experienced that. So while it's not mandated, we've seen a significant impact, um, to the, to the clients that we serve. In addition, you'll see that drug court and DWI court, we say are mandated. Those types of programs are not mandated, but the fact that we have to supervise those individuals are. The DWI and drug court is the process or program in which we supervise those individuals. We would have to supervise them regardless. Um, so that's why we note that they're mandated. They would just be in a different pot.
So this is probably a question that I guess I'd like to have several people weigh in if, if, I don't know if Dr. Hul is on there and Debbie, I guess I'd like to hear from you. I would just, I'm thinking back to when the county, uh, when we were, um, community corrections and it was Morrison, Aiken and Crow Wing. And when we decided to change that, as I think we all know, change is difficult for people and it was really difficult. And I look at that gavel back there and if you look, there's a chunk of wood missing from it because I was the chair and I was hitting it so hard that the piece of wood flew off because people were really angry about changing the way things were. And I'm just curious if feedback from you and Dr. Hul and you guys, if, if you think, do you think we're better off now than we were before? I know what I think, but I want to know what you guys think.
So I can, I can start and what I would do is encourage you to ask Preston and Krista and Kay. They were agents when we were, um, when we were going through this transition and you might remember Preston was on the opposing side and not wanting to move forward with this change. And now what they say is it's better than it's ever been. So I can say that. I can say that we are tracking, we have the data, um, we know the work that they're doing and from the folks that were here before, that's what speaks really highly to me.
I guess I'd like to hear from.
Could we get your name and address, please?
My name is Tim Hul. Um, I think that Kara said it very well. The, at the end of the day, it was never really about saving money per se. This was about public safety and making sure that we could sleep at night, that people who had committed crimes in our community were going to be properly supervised. We didn't have confidence that that was happening as well as it needed to happen. And so, uh, I think Kara pointing out, we cherry picked who we wished to hire from CMCC. It is interesting to me that the current leadership of C, of our corrections all come from CMCC. Uh, it was not that there were all bad there. There was a lot of good going on there as well, but there was no tracking. The accountability was lacking. I think this is a much better circumstance. We know better how well we're protecting the community than we did then.
And Tim, can you just expand just to, for the people that probably don't remember this, that we, that we had Morrison, Aiken and Crow Wing and we really could be outvoted. So this county board decisions could be made and we had no control over it. And that didn't, doesn't make any sense.
We comprised the majority of clients in CMCC and had one-third of the votes in CMCC. I think that pretty well sums up the situation we found ourselves in.
Yes.
Where we could be outvoted and our expenses would go up more.
Cause we paid 52% of the.
That is correct. It was more than a majority were our clients and we only had one-third of the votes. Any other questions?
None for you. Deb, do you have any, any comments?
I would have just agreed with what both of them said. I think you can really point to those things at that point.
I just, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't sound like I'm bragging, but I, I just think.
You are.
I think kudos to the county board, you know, we've made. I think kudos to the county board. You know, we've made a lot of tough decisions that I think just kind of go unnoticed, you know, like, like this decision, I think was a real good decision. Combining the auditor treasurer and doing that was a great decision. Refinancing the debt, uh, of Crow Wing County that saved us $5 million. There's just been a lot of decisions that have been made that I think that people really never know. But that's why they elect us to make those decisions. And so I'm really proud of, you know, the, the work that the county board has done over the years. I think it's really good. I, I think if you look at other counties, um, we are heads and above everybody else, I think. And that's pretty.
Thank you for this work. It's very nice to see that. I'll scrutinize it more. Very good work.
It's a lot of numbers on a lot of pages, but, um, when I just totaled up, I looked at the sheets and you, you start out with total staff 210, 74 on the bottom of the first sheet. But when I look down through it, it shows that you have about a, um, looks like 119 program staff people working. And I mean, when I look at it, it's from FTEs, what you're showing FTEs. And of that you've only got, uh, what do you got? Four, what do they figure? Four managers and the, and some other supervisor. So is that, is that the staff? Is that the total staff for, for community services?
That's the total staff within each actual division, but that doesn't include our support staff and accounting staff.
Okay.
Is, so that's, that's where we get to the 210.
It's a big chunk of our, of our employees in the Crow Wing County.
Correct.
Okay. It's, it is a lot of numbers and, and it's a lot to go over. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for having it for us. Cause I like information.
I will follow up with the prior five-year numbers for you as well.
There's gonna be an information overload here pretty soon, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And I think we have, uh, the Camp Ripley update is now. If you ready for that?
Yep.
Couple of paper handouts. For the board members. We also have a, uh, a survey in terms of what the board thinks, I guess of Camp Ripley. Answer that as candidly and honestly as you can, please. We appreciate your feedback.
You're giving us homework?
Giving you homework.
Paul, I know you didn't do well with homework, so. Ask Deb to help you with that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So good morning. I am Colonel Troy Fink. I am the Garrison Commander of Camp Ripley. I also command the training site that is just north of the metro at the AHATS facility, uh, just north of the, of the metro there. Basically just a quick update for, for the board here, uh, this morning. Um, and again, thank you for having us. But if you go to the next slide is the Camp Ripley's mission statement. And I just highlight, uh, the very bottom line that's underlying. Positive community relations, I think is our number one focus, um, in terms of all of our relationships across the board. Um, so, uh, we'll get into some of our partnerships further in the slides, but, uh, those relationships and partnerships are critically important, uh, to the, to the Camp Ripley base and, and the operating environment around Camp Ripley. So critically important is something that I work on, uh, continuously, uh, with all of our partners, you being one of them. Next slide, we're just going to talk a little bit about the, uh, the leadership of the Minnesota Army National Guard. On this slide, you're going to see Major General Sean Manke. He is the Adjutant General of the State of Minnesota. Uh, answers to Governor Walz and team. And then his Command Sergeant Major or Command Chief Master Sergeant is Lisa Erickson. So his right hand in terms of all enlisted, uh, activities and, and things like that. Moving on, our 34th Infantry Division, uh, commanded by Major General, uh, Charles Kemper and his Command Sergeant Major Matthew Erickson, they are currently forward deployed, um, with the division headquarters. So we expect those folks back sometime in November. And they are based out of Arden Hills, uh, just so that the division of Hoodcoaters was just built two, three years ago on Arden Hills. So that's their new base. They did move out of Rosemount to Arden Hills. And then the next slide is just the Camp Ripley leadership, which is myself and my Command Sergeant Major Ryan Hofstedt. And like I said, we command both Camp Ripley, uh, and the AHATS Training Center. A big takeaway, next slide is, is really our economic impact to the area. I think this is pretty significant as it relates to, uh, all of the employees that, that, that we bring on, whether they're state employees, whether they're federal technicians, whether they're active guard and reserve like myself. This, this is, I think, very, um, conducive to, I think, some counties and what they see in terms of their economic impacts. Um, I'm not calling myself a county, um, but, uh, pretty, pretty significant. And you can kind of see how some of the things are, are broken out there. Uh, that's, um, pretty much, uh, kind of how we lay, lay everything out in terms of the monies that we're spending. Uh, the next slide, our location, I think everybody knows where Camp Ripley is primarily located. Uh, dead center of the state of Minnesota. Um, we border obviously Morrison, Cass and Crow Wing Counties. Um, we've got 18 miles of the most undisturbed Mississippi River, uh, from, from its conception down to the Gulf. Uh, we're pretty proud of that. In fact, we are a level two training center at Camp Ripley. Uh, a level five at Arden Hills. And really the significance of a level two, uh, training center, is that we basically have the capability to do heavy maneuver, uh, aviation operations and things like that. The only real difference between a level one and a level two training center is that we do not necessarily mobilize, uh, units out of Camp Ripley. They will go to a mobilization station to mobilize. So Camp, Camp, uh, Camp Atterbury, Indiana is a level one. So a National Guard Training Center, right? That has the capability to mobilize soldiers, even though Camp Ripley kind of does sometimes. Uh, we just don't get the classification of the level one. Uh, next slide, some of our accomplishment events. I think everybody's, uh, has seen, you know, our, our Camp Ripley Open House. Um, our, our, we just got done with the 51st, uh, uh, annual Norwegian exchange that was held in February. And then just some of the other things that we try to, uh, to foster in terms of partnerships, um, and, and the people and inter-agencies that we bring through Camp Ripley. Uh, next slide is really kind of our, uh, start of our, our support, uh, to civil authorities. This process, um, and I'm not sure if Crow Wing, uh, is aware, but I, I think we brief this annually to you folks. But really if there's a natural disaster or there's a need, uh, for the National Guard, that request typically will come through the sheriff's office to Homeland Security Emergency Management Team, up to the governor to approve the use of the National Guard. And these are just typically some of the missions that we are assigned, um, in those situations. Uh, next slide is just a quick construction update. Camp Ripley is, uh, is very busy, uh, right now in the month of June. Uh, so we are, we are juggling multiple construction projects and, and military training, uh, across the board. And the most recent, uh, one is the top one, the, the rail spur. We are adding approximately two miles more of rail on the base coming off of, uh, Minnesota 115, uh, through our East Gate. Um, that's going to really maximize our readiness stature. Uh, so we can mobilize one of the largest units in the Minnesota Guard, which is the 34th, the First Brigade, 34th Infantry Division, um, Combat Brigade. Uh, typically takes about 14 days with our current infrastructure. This two additional miles is going to get us, we're estimating it down to about three or four days out to port with all of the rolling stock vehicles, track vehicles, et cetera. So we're pretty proud of that. In fact, that's going to really increase our readiness. Next slide is the museum update. Um, we're pretty excited about this. They should be starting to break ground here, uh, probably mid to late July. Uh, it's right off of 371 and, and 115, uh, intersection is where it's going. It's about a 40,000 square foot building. Um, we were approved, uh, uh, through Governor Walz and team at the state. The monies to build it. So we're pretty excited, uh, to get that project up and running and, and moving forward. It's going to probably be anywhere from 18 to 24 months, uh, construction time, uh, before the new museum will be opened up to the public. Really the meat and potatoes on the next slide, our 2024, uh, schedule for training. Like I said, June is, is a, a pretty, our busiest month of the summer. Um, we have, uh, and our loudest too. Uh, we've had a number of artillery units, cannon and rocket, uh, on the base, uh, over the last couple of weeks. Shooting artillery. So they make quite a bit of noise sometimes. Uh, we understand that, but it, uh, like I said, we're a level two training center and, and this is one of those, uh, capacities that we have to train those units. Um, July, uh, will also be fairly busy. However, we're bringing in, uh, the XETC, which is Exportable Combat Training, uh, teams, uh, to get ready. The Second Brigade of the 34th Infantry Division, which is stationed out of Iowa. Um, so they're coming up to Camp Ripley for about a month, uh, to go through the XETC exercise. That comes with a lot of contractors and a lot of folks, uh, your hotels will probably be very full, uh, the month of July. So that's, and then really the rest of the, uh, the rest of the summer months really come down to really our, our typical throughput of all Minnesota National Guard units that come, uh, to train at their, their two-week annual training period. Moving on to the next slide is really our, our state partnerships. And this is something, um, that, uh, I know the Adjutant General and myself are very proud of, uh, the relationships that we have with the, uh, the agencies within Minnesota. So Homeland Security Emergency Management, the State Patrol, the Minnesota DNR and the Minnesota DOT. Obviously the State Patrol and the DNR, they run their academies on Camp Ripley. So they run through all of their new recruits, uh, on our base, which, uh, I think works very well. In terms of shared resources and, and things like that, that really make a difference, uh, for the state agencies. And then the Minnesota DOT team, they don't, they don't have permanent red residence on Camp Ripley, uh, like the other agencies do. But they do come up and conduct their drivers, their snowplower drivers training on Camp Ripley. So we're pretty, pretty happy that we can support, uh, the Minnesota DOT in, in that fashion as well. Moving on to soldier and family programs, there is a number of resources, uh, that we house on Camp Ripley, uh, in terms of the family readiness aspect, uh, mental health, psychological, uh, counselors, financial counselors. I mean, you name it. I think we pretty much can cover down on any kind of resource for our soldiers and our families. Uh, and then the next slide, community outreach. Again, this is, goes back to, uh, the first slide, you know, positive community, uh, you know, community facing, um, atmosphere when we want to really try to get out into our communities and do things. These are just some of the things that we do and partner with, uh, the local communities around the area, uh, to support. Today actually is, uh, one of the, the first annual, uh, career fair being held on Camp Ripley, uh, with the Deed, uh, team. And, uh, we're pretty, uh, excited about that. So I'm, I'm missing that right now, but that's, that's okay. Pretty exciting event. Moving on, uh, our environmental program, the next couple of slides, we're going to talk kind of environmental. Uh, I've got a phenomenal team of environmentalists, uh, working on the base of state employees. Uh, they are truly award-winning folks. Uh, they win awards at the national level almost annually for what they do in terms of balancing military training and the environment. So as you can imagine, military training can be very destructive to the environment with bombs and track vehicles and all kinds of things. Um, this environmental team, uh, that we have, uh, comes right behind us, right? And make sure that we're compliant with all Minnesota rules and regulations as it relates, to the environment, to endangered species, to you name it. The long-eared northern bat, the, the blending turtles, the, I mean, there's a, there's a species of bee that, that we're looking after too. So, I mean, there's all kinds of different things. Phenomenal team. And these are just some of their, uh, uh, things that they do. Obviously the partnerships on the next slide. Uh, again, we extend that out. Um, I will say the, uh, the team at CLC has been phenomenal to work with, uh, over at the CLC and the students, uh, coming on to camp, getting some, some practical experience, when it comes to environmental programs and different things like that. So we're, we're pretty proud of that fact. Um, the next slide is really the prescribed burns. Uh, we burnt just a little over 14,000 acres, uh, this year on, on the base. This really helps us, um, again, uh, the reason we do this is because military training can be very destructive and, and firing tracers and, and large bombs that start things on fire. If we do the prescribed burns, uh, when we need to, we really get ahead of that. Um, and it all also is very good for the environment, uh, as well. So occasionally you will see some smoke. If you're driving down 371 or you're in Pillager or you're on County Road One, uh, you may see something like that that's going on. But again, we try to do our very best, um, Facebook page, radio, all of that to, to communicate, uh, to the communities. The next slide is the Army Combattible Use Buffer Program. Everything you see on this slide that's highlighted green is current acres enrolled into the A-Cub program. The terminology is changing, so you probably won't hear A-Cub, uh, anymore. It's going to be the Army Repi Program. So they're trying to transition, uh, from the A-Cub to the Army Repi. Now, what does that mean? A-Cub still exists. It'll still be part of the Army Repi Program, but it'll be holistic. So Sentinel Landscape, uh, Soil and Water, all those different things will be rolled into the Army Repi Program. So, um, we are waiting for additional guidance, uh, from the National Guard Bureau to come out as it relates to that change, so that we are in front of any rule changes or anything like that. And then everybody's safety, uh, brief for the day, uh, unexplored ordinance, okay? If you're ever on Camp Ripley, you may come across, uh, some different things. We ask you not to touch it. We ask you not to lift it up, take it home with you or anything like that. It is dangerous. Please, uh, please contact, uh, our, uh, our team at Camp Ripley that can help you dispose of those things. Now, if it is found off of Camp Ripley for some reason, we ask you to call 911. Again, do not touch it, do not go near it. It could blow up, uh, potentially. So we want to make sure that everybody is safe as it relates, uh, to unexplored ordinance. And then I think that's all I have. So I will open it up to questions or dialogue from, from the board.
Mr. Chair, quick question on the, on the burns that you do. Is fourteen thousand acres kind of an average year over year?
It, it depends on what, what we've burned in the past. So it, it may fluctuate probably three to five thousand acres from year to year.
Okay. And are the training numbers that you identified through the various months of the year, are they pretty consistent too, year over year?
We ebb and flow a little bit there too, depending on what exercises and what's, what's going on in the environment. So if, if, if we've got a influx of mobilizing soldiers, they always will have the priority at Camp Ripley for training resources. So we may have an influx one month or another based on mobilizations, but pretty consistent year over year. To get to your question, I would say we stay pretty consistent. So we average between probably four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand soldiers, basically coming through Camp Ripley a year.
And one last thing, personal thing, thank you for the training you do. I live in Baxter and I hear all your artillery and I appreciate it. I want those soldiers trained to the best of their ability.
Absolutely, so do we.
So thank you very much for what you do down there.
Quite a, quite a tourist actor, or place to go down, do down there for four hundred and some people coming into, into town.
Yeah, it's, like I said, the, the economic impact of soldiers getting gas or picking up their pops and chips and whatever they're going to bring to the training area with them. I mean, it all, I think it all ebbs and flows. And like I said, in the month of July with the X C T C, that, that's going to bring a significant amount of money, I think, to the area because, you know, the hotels and all the rental cars that come with the X C T C is just, it's, it's phenomenal.
You know, one of our commissioners has a V R B O down at his place.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, just a comment, I've been, you're right, I've been hearing some pretty big booms, you know, some pretty big, I kind of wish you could send one of those big booms on, over to Putin. I think that would help everybody, you know. You don't have to comment on that.
But I'm not.
Don't, don't comment, but I can just say, I wish you could send one over to him and that might help a lot of people.
You know, when my children were younger, we would come down there for when you'd have an open house and stuff like that. And it was always just, I, I, I don't know if a lot of people really know what goes on there unless, and you have done, I think, was it last year or year before you had the one for the?
Twenty twenty-three was our last open house, twenty twenty-five will be our next.
Because I was down, that was for the dedication of, of that, for the museum and stuff like that. And that was, that was really well done. I mean, and you had a lot of different other players. I mean, you know, Soil and Water was down there, some of the other stuff, because all the stuff you do with that large amount of piece of property you got there, so.
We try to give everybody a shot to come to open house and have a booth, have the opportunity to engage the community, answer questions, whatever we need to do.
Well, thank you for your service, Colonel.
Cool.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. We all have a great day and again, thanks for having me.
Keep dry.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for a few minutes of your time today. So here today to talk about some ATV trails. So as a little bit of background, Crow Wing County, we sponsor eight different ATV trails, about two hundred miles. And that work is done in conjunction between the state and the county. So we have a contract together that states that we will assure that the trails are being maintained and then the state funds them. And so the approach that the county has taken is we look for local trail organizations, those that are local that want to ride, to maintain the trails on our behalf. So the topic of today's discussion is the Pine Center area. So in May, the North Metro Trail Riders informed us that they were no longer going to be maintaining the trails. They had some concerns, some, some funding concerns and some volunteer concerns. They weren't able to adequately maintain the trails, so they did drop their maintenance effect, effective July first this year.
Tom, how many miles of trail does that?
So they, they maintain about forty-three miles. They maintain the Pine Center Trail and then this, a portion of the Southern Loop Trail as well.
Okay.
So not great news. So since May, we've been working hard to try to find somebody to pick up the trails. That's the best case scenario for us. And thankfully, the Pine Center Sportsman's Club last week agreed to do that pending your guys' approval. So we're here with good news today in that we found somebody to take over the trails. Interestingly enough, the Pine Center Trails are one of our oldest systems, been around for a long time, almost since the Grant Aid Program was established in nineteen eighty-seven. And so the Pine Center Sportsman's Club were actually the first ones to build the trails and maintain them up until two thousand eight, or two thousand eighteen, excuse me. And at that time, they dropped their maintenance due to a lack of volunteers. And so I met with them last week and they were concerned, they had some questions about, you know, what the county expects and, and funding, and we were able to answer those and they've agreed to pick up maintenance, like I said, on the first of July pending your guys' approval. So do you have any questions for me right off the bat? If, if, if not, the next steps would be to bring a trail permit to the county board. It'd be the same exact permit that we had with the North Metro Trail Riders. It would just be, they would be agreeing to our, our policies and procedures that you've established for maintenance of those trails.
Any comment on that, Paul? It's in your district.
No, I think it's all good. I was informed of this and, you know, if there wasn't going to be anybody to step up and maintain the trails, I said, well, we'll just, we'll have to close the trails because we're not going to, we're not going to go and get into the trail business. If the clubs want to have it, I'm all fine with it. And so I'm very happy about this. The Snow D O's are very happy too. I did get a call from George Burton who they, in the wintertime, they use some of these trails too. So he called me up and he says, all right, you can put your barricades back in the closet, he said, because he thought I was going to barricade the trails. So I think this is good news. I, you know, I, I don't, if you ever drive that way, there's actually a lot of people that use these trails and it, and it, it helps local businesses like J R's Junction and the Green Lantern and, you know, there's an annual trail, I believe, or trail ride from the Green Lantern. So it's, it's good for local businesses and if that's good for, it's good for our community. So I'm, I'm all, all in favor of it.
Is one of the struggles, Tom, the dollars that come from, is it D N R, wherever they come from, in helping maintain driveway approaches and that, isn't there a little bit of a struggle there for some of the clubs?
Yes, the, the clubs every year put, put together an application for the funds they think they need and then that's approved by the D N R and they set the funding levels. And so the club that was maintaining them up until July first of this year, they were actually a club out of the cities, the northern part of the cities. So they were having a lot of driving expenses to get up here and so that was impacting the amount of work that they can, they can accomplish. But yeah, there is some work that the Pine Center Club is going to have to tackle over the next couple of years, such as driveway approaches.
So why did they drop in, now it's the same group that was doing it in twenty eighteen?
Correct.
And then they dropped? Different leadership now?
Just a lack of volunteers is, is what I was told back in two thousand eighteen. So they're confident now. When I attended their meeting last week, you know, the room was full. They had lots of good club members there that seemed excited to do some maintenance on the trails. You know, they're the ones that are down there riding them. They like the trails, they want to see them open, so they're going to be able to put that commitment forward to us to maintain them.
Mr. Chair, I think what Tom is saying is a real good point when you see these groups that are volunteer-based, that are doing these maintenance efforts. We see this with our ATV clubs, our snowmobile clubs, some of these other groups that rely on the volunteer labor. You hear about this at Big Island even, from the standpoint of needing to have the manpower to go and do the work. The grant aid funds are all great to help them to actually have the equipment that's needed, pay for the time that it takes to do that, but to actually have someone who's going to go do the brushwork, do the grooming, do the things that need to happen to make those trails accessible. It's this almost cyclical issue where you see a group of volunteers who have been the leaders for so long, when they age out, they need to get another group who's coming up behind them. Continuing that volunteer basis does sometimes take a couple of generations to work through in some regard.
And then I think also that the, I think when, when the local community down there realized that they could be losing their trails.
Right.
I think then, I think a lot of people stepped up. And I, I, you know, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, when these storms come through in the summertime or even if trees go down in the wintertime, there is a lot of maintenance. I mean, there's trees that are over the, they got to lug their chainsaw back there, get these trails opened up. So it can be, it can be a challenge. It really can.
I think we appreciate it. Appreciate your efforts to contact the clubs and explain that situation to them. So thank you very much.
So that'll be coming to us, that permit will be coming to us shortly then, or?
With your permission, hopefully on consent next Tuesday.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense, doesn't it?
Thank you.
One other thing, since you were talking about, Deb, talking about the volunteerism and stuff, when that storm hit up in, in, on Clamshell and stuff, with the Raleigh Johnson Island got hit pretty hard out there. And I give Tom credit for finding a couple Crow Wing County people who ride out there on a boat the other day, and I just got a message back from Jim Grant who couldn't thank us enough for the help because that island is pretty much taken care of by the volunteers up there and they are definitely in that age group and, and he couldn't thank you enough for the amount of help out there. He sent some pictures, I haven't seen everything, I haven't been out to the island yet, but it, it got hit pretty hard and that's a lot of mature, natural, what do you call it, old growth?
Yep.
And so I don't, did you hear much from your crew that were out there?
Yeah, I did talk to them this morning and like you said, kudos to the Environmental Services technicians that were out there doing that work yesterday.
Yeah, really, really was.
There's quite a few trees that are down on the island and, you know, we're not talking about trees like this. They're, they're big trees. So they worked all day yesterday to help clean off and clean up some of the campsites, but there's still more work to do out there, that's for sure. Potentially even a trail reroute, we'll have to see, but there's just a lot of trees down.
And it was, it was a nice day to do it yesterday.
Yes.
Today, not so much.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for taking the lead on that, Tom, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, Tom, I don't, I don't, I'm not one to pass out compliments very quickly and I don't like to turn meetings into a love fest, but I just want to tell you that I can, I think you've really stepped up your game a lot. And I hear good things from everybody and, you know, whether it's George Burton or, or it's other people in the community, that you're doing an excellent job. And I, on behalf of the board, I think I can speak for the board. We, we appreciate you doing a great job. You've, you've really.
Thank you, Commissioner. Happy to serve.
Doing good.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tom?
Nope.
Have a good day, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're closing the room down here, it looks like. You may come up to the table if you'd like, Chris.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't know if this is going to be a love fest, but.
Hear that, I'm going, oh boy. Not anticipating that, but, so we have been working on that, on our, the county comprehensive plan now going on, you know, over a year and the plan is now out for comment. And so we're circling back today to just have a discussion with you about some of the comments that we received so far and then also just to see if there's been any feedback from you as well as what you've, you know, maybe what, if you've read the plan, have any comments or questions. But I thought before we would get into maybe more of the comments themselves, just a reminder on our timeline of where we're at. So the comment period did start on June fourth and it'll go to July fifth, which is a Friday. And then today we have Community of the Whole just talking about the preliminary comments and maybe some comments from the board that you have. The plan then is come back to the meeting, Community of the Whole in July sixteenth and we'll have all the comments at that point. We'll have an, we'll have some maybe, we'll have some updated draft with some potential recommendations of changes based on those comments. We'll make sure that those are underlined so you can see any new additions. Two days later, we'll go to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustments for their regular meeting on the eighteenth and there'll be a workshop at three P M. to work with the planning commission and the public's invited to come to that. We're going to walk through the plan. Five P M. we'd have the public hearing and the goal will be that they would make a recommendation to the board as to what they think we should move forward with on the plan. And then we come back again to the board then on August twentieth, the Community of the Whole, review the public hearing comments, look at the final draft, make sure that we're hitting all the, checking all the boxes that need to be checked. And then coming back to the board on August twenty-seventh to hopefully adopt the comp plan at that point and to also adopt the land use map as part of the comp plan on the twenty-seventh.
So a question, Tim, or Chris, so the reason why I said Tim is I'm thinking, is Tim Terrell the only one that comments on this stuff? What is this page that we're looking at?
Sure.
I mean, is it Tim Terrell, Tim Terrell, Tim Terrell, Tim Terrell?
Yep, so we, so what we do is we try to just break out the comments. So it's, it's one comment that he, he sent us one email. We just try to break out the different topics that he has in there so we're not giving it like a whole paragraph.
Did he get all that in one email?
Mm-hmm. Yep. He did. And, and so we can, if you wanted, we can just jump right into the comments if you'd like. And so, you know, obviously Tim Terrell with the Mississippi Headwaters Board is their executive director and he had some good comments to make about making sure that we're including some more clarity on the Mississippi River in the plan. And so based on what he's provided in that, I think we would recommend making those changes. They're just more, just calling out what's already there as far as their, the twenty nineteen headwaters plan they've got and their comprehensive plan and those sorts of things that we just need to list as some of the other plans that are important in the county. So we have that. And then he had a couple of other ones that we're going to look at as far as some of the terminology that he has for trails, hiking and recreation. So I think that's a section that we can revise and add a little bit of language on that one. And he thinks there should be some not, you know, just a little comment about the Great River Road that, that we have that follows the river in the county. And I think we'll probably add that to one of our maps. And then he didn't then mention a little bit more about virtual meetings and then a little bit more about landfill related stuff, which is not really stuff for the comp plan, more of an, you know, more just a comment, I think, on those other items, but they don't really pertain to this. So we, comments were noted in that, but didn't really see the, that would be, we probably make any changes to the comp plan for.
And I would agree with that, Chris. I looked at the, the one where he talks about resource attainment and that, and those are activities that Mississippi Headwaters supports.
Correct.
At different communities.
Right. Yeah, so I think we could, we could.
But this is an overarching comp plan. It doesn't get, shouldn't get that specific.
Not down in the weeds, correct. Exactly. Umbrella, the big umbrella. So we need it today with the rain, definitely, but, so, but I think we can make a couple tweaks just based on some of the verbiage, not referring specifically to, you know, the resource attainment and that, but just a little, I think we can just enhance a little bit of our recreation talk based on this, so.
I think we appreciate, you know, we want people to weigh in.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that we have to run into every single comment that somebody puts in here.
Absolutely. No, that's why we review them and then we'll, you know, from a staff perspective, we'll make a recommendation as to what we think we should do with it. You know, for those comments from Tim, I think we'll just thank for the comments, but probably won't make any, you know, modifications to the plan based on, on those two. We might just make a couple modifications to the recreation component, just for more clarity. Then we can also add some other areas where the river should probably be mentioned for more clarity. So I think the comments overall were good and I think it will help improve the plan and improve clarity of the plan for the Mississippi River. So I think it'll work.
What about the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you have the one in there, the comment on, from Jim Knudsen, who, and I see your answer back to that, you know?
Which one?
The Jim Knudsen on your, it would be at page thirty-eight.
Yep, yep, yep. I'll just, I was going to, we'll, did you, do you guys have this spreadsheet of the summary of the comments?
Yeah. Go to the next page, yeah.
Yep. Yep, so then we're going to, the next one we had up there, we had a couple.
Thirty-eight, if you can. Yep, yep.
Okay. Do you want to talk about Jim, Jim's next? Okay.
Yeah, it was, because there, that one time you did have, back in ninety-seven, you did have the comp plan for Unorganized, but we've decided that, that we're doing an overreap, we're not doing a separate one for Unorganized, we're only doing a comp plan for Crow Wing County.
Well, and I think it's, I'm glad you're bringing it up, Mr. Chair, about the value of a township plan versus a county plan. And so I think there's been a misunderstanding over the years of what a township comp plan is intended to do compared to the county comprehensive plan. And so numerous townships in the county do have a comp plan. And so take for example, like Crow Wing and Irondale, they have a comp plan and that implements their, their program, the regulatory program and how they want to see their township developed. But there are other townships that have. But there are other townships that have a comprehensive plan that don't do their own planning and zoning and regulatory. And, and so when we look at certain actions that require a comprehensive plan review, like for a conditional use permit, or for a variance, or for a plat, we look to the county's comprehensive plan and not to the township comprehensive plan. And I think there's some confusion over that as to why we're not using the townships. Because the township comprehensive plan would implement a township regulatory program. The county comp plan implements a county regulatory program. And so, from a legal standpoint, we have to use the county comp plan because that's what we're operating under. And for those townships that want their, you know, their comprehensive plan to be implemented, they could choose to then just, you know, do their own planning and zoning if they wanted to. And then they could implement their comp plan that way. And so I think, you know, the same thing here with, with the unorganized territory that was done back in nineteen ninety-seven. So it's, we still have it. It's on the books. It's on the website. It, when we look at it from a comprehensive plan standpoint about decisions being made in the First Assessment District, we look at the county comprehensive plan. So.
Just to comment on that, you know, I, you know, I've got a lot of townships in my district. And I, in a polite way, usually, I, I let townships know, you know, I just recently, you know, there's maybe a proposed gravel pit in one of my townships is a little, not a little, but quite upset. And I politely told them, I said, you can do your own planning and zoning.
Yep.
If you don't like what we're doing here. But we've got to go by our rules. And if it fits into our rules, that's the way it works, you know. So I, so I, I'm quick to tell townships, you know, because I think that, they think that, that what they say, and they've, they've actually, what would you call it, Deb? They've delegated, they've delegated the authority of planning and zoning to the county. And we're going by our, our comprehensive plan and our ordinances.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not as nice about it as you were when I talked to some of the townships up there, because they like to, you know, try to tell us what to do.
Right.
And, and the one case in Mission Township where I said, you know, if you want to do your own comp plan, do it. Well, they are, but they're specific on what they're using.
Correct.
They're, they're specific on what they want to use it for. But they've done the homework and everything it takes to put that in place.
Correct. Right.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just chime in on my district. I don't tell Brainerd or Baxter what to do at all.
Good to hear. Yeah. I'm sure they appreciate that. I'm sure they appreciate that.
Sure, they really appreciate that. Is there anything else from, do you have anything more?
To Jim, I actually called him and talked on the phone last week for, for a while, just to help, just to give him some information. And, you know, the, the comprehensive plan from, the First Assessment from ninety-seven is still there, still in the books. It hasn't, it's not going away. But the utilization of it will be minimal compared to that of the, compared to the new updated county comprehensive plan. And the other piece too, I know that there was some important, you know, that was, that document drafted back in nineteen ninety-seven. And just for reference, I was just a senior in college. So, that's been a little, few years ago. So, not sure that, you know, those, you know, maybe that was the feeling back at that point. But things have changed and we're seeing new direction as far as how the county is growing and where things are moving. So.
They might want to update it.
Yeah. Well, and, and I think, you know, my message to Jim was that if they wanted to update it, they should organize and
Yep.
become a township.
That's exactly.
And then, then they could adopt their own planning and zoning and, and, you know, and go through that process. And then they could, you know, then they could really implement how they want.
Could you go back? I, I noticed Zach Tabit's name. I think he's on the Baxter City Council. What did he have to say?
I think when you look at what he had in place was, it sounded like he, there was a little bit of maybe softening the language about our cooperation and collaboration with the cities. And so, you know, it looks like we had maybe referenced, and I think we might have just missed this, but as a cooperation cities is a potential issue or problem. We're not saying it's a potential issue. We're saying it's just not easy. Sometimes having that collaboration and working is just not as, as easy as we would hope it to be. So we're not saying that any of the cities in the, in the county are definitely a problem or we don't want to work with them. But it's just challenging, because they have their own comprehensive plan and their goals.
Right.
And then how that ties to the county, you know, over, you know, the kind of overreaching there. A little bit, you know, not tied together as tight as you might think, just because the desires and goals of what the city would want to implement. So, so it's that type of thing. And we can, well, we've already made notes on that. And that, we can update that language. That won't take, won't take too much to do as far as that. Because we definitely want to be a good partner with our cities. You know, they're, they're a definite partner. And we want to work with them and collaborate in, you know, all ways that we can. And then we had just one other comment from, from Haley Majeris. And just wanted to know how many people have filled out the surveys before we started the plan. And we had two hundred and twenty-three people. So that was a simple, quick response. So we've only had the four, the four comments. And so, it's been pretty quiet on that. I haven't had a lot of people calling and asking. So we got another couple of weeks for further comments. And then we'll come back and visit with you again in July and give you an idea of what all the comments were. And then, we'll let you know what we might recommend is some modifications to the draft so that that can go to the public hearing on the 18th.
It's all been going pretty smooth.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we have, what is it, Bolton and Mink are the ones that are
Yeah.
heading it up. And their reports to us have been pretty nice, so.
Correct. I think it's just a process. It's, I think it's a clear method. And there's, I think it's very, we've been very transparent on the whole process and coming and visiting with you every month. So, if people aren't aware of the comprehensive plan process, it just means that they're, you know, just haven't been engaged maybe as much with the activities of the county board. So.
So, a question. So, I don't know that this is related, well, it is kind of related to this. So, this is probably directed towards the county administrator. I did watch the Brainerd City Council meeting last night. And they did have conversations about Riverside Drive. You might know that there's, they've got public utilities out there. And they've got one person that is not in the city limits of Brainerd, but they are on public utilities. And so they talked about annexing that person. And they talked about other areas. And they had kind of a map up there. And so that would be the county board's decision as the town board of unorganized territory.
Correct.
And I, for one, if they feel like the need to bring those areas into the, the city, I guess I don't have an issue with that. Would there be an issue? What would be the, what, what would be the issue that we would have? I don't know that there'd be any.
The, Mr. Chair, there wouldn't necessarily be any issues from the county's perspective. You would have to make the determination whether or not that is in line with our comp plan of how we want to see the development happening in that area. The city of Brainerd did reach out. And Chris did meet with them with regard to this proposed annexation plan that they have. They have kind of a three-phase approach. And from what we've discussed, we don't see that there would be any, any concerns or issues with what their plan would be.
So then, would you be coming forward? I know that they said that they did meet with the county staff. So would you be coming forward to get the consensus of the board on orderly annexation?
Correct. Yeah. When they're ready to begin that process. If you look at that map, when you go up Riverside, it's very patchwork, where it's like First Assessment, First Assessment Cities. It's very confusing when you go up Riverside as to what's what. So their plan, I think, is just to go up Riverside itself, up to Aaron's Hill approximately in that location, and have those properties that are on the road be brought into the city. There's, there are current sewer and water hookups on a majority of those properties currently. More to the south, not all the way up to Aaron's Hill. But there's water and sewer further up there than you would think up Riverside.
I know there is, yeah.
And this would be something that we'll let Brainerd take the lead on. We will wait till they approach us.
They approach us, right.
There won't be any action. We will bring forward ahead of time. As they approach us with whatever that plan will be, we'll be bringing that forward to you as an orderly annexation process.
Yeah, that, that's a process that they, they have to start. It isn't, we have anything to do until they bring it to us. We have nothing to really be involved in.
Well, as the township board, we could force annexation because they don't want to organize into their own city. I'm being facetious here.
Yes, I know.
And a lot of this is
But I still think that, that if I remember my legislative years and talking about this, the city, you know, the townships, even though the township people might say, well, I don't want to be annexed into the city. I think the city has more cards in their hand as far as annex. I mean, I don't, I don't think the township can say, well, we don't, we don't want that to happen. I think it's
Right.
kind of, I think all the cards, not all the cards, but most of the cards are in the city's hand. Am I right?
You're exactly correct. And that's why
Of course.
there wouldn't be any action for us to be taking
Right.
until they come to us. They will. Right.
Yeah.
Actually, it's changed a little bit in where we, you can actually have a detach from a city to a township.
That has happened.
And that, that statute has changed a little bit to make it easier for somebody who's in a city that says, I don't receive these services. I don't receive this. I want to detach. And, and that process has changed a little bit over the last
We've, we had a detachment from Breezy Point up to Ideal Township, probably ten, twelve years ago, I'd say.
Ten years ago, probably.
Wild Acres, up in that area with the Ebbets. They detached from Breezy Point. So, yeah, the discussion of the, I think a lot of this talk about Riverside stemmed from, we had a property I was in First Assessment that had a septic system that needed to be upgraded. And I checked with the BPU and said, do you guys have, do you have, because I knew there was connections up there. And it turned out they had sewer and water there. And so now they're trying to figure out, because they assessed, you know, those costs twenty years ago when they put that up there. Now they're, so they got to figure out, how does that, you know, what does that assessment look like? And, and how they want to get that bill paid as part of it. So I think that's the bigger picture, kind of stemmed from just knowing that the, you know, it's, would be, I think, wrong to have somebody put a new septic system in when they've got a, the pipe and the water sitting right there, stubbed in. They just have to make the connection. So, it's a good discussion.
It is, that, that whole unorganized territory or FAD district is the largest growing as far as residential housing, I think, in Crow Wing County. As far as dollars, when I was looking at dollars.
Oh, yeah. And permit numbers.
Permit numbers and stuff like that.
Very, very, very much, there's a lot going on up there. Yep. And I live in First Assessment too. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm way up on the northeast corner of First Assessment. And it's a great township to, to live in and raise your family. So, it's a great place to live.
You don't want to be annexed. Do you want to be annexed into Brainerd?
Into Merrifield. You can ask me in Merrifield. I'd be like Edward Township. But, yeah.
They'd have to have a long arm to reach up there.
Is that like the
Long ways for Brainerd to pick me up.
Like the, like the city of St. Matthias, right?
Yep.
Go to the city of Merrifield.
Yep. I'm from Merrifield. So, yeah.
You're from Merrifield.
Yeah, for sure.
So, Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else, I'd like to just acknowledge the Sheriff's Department, Land Services, Community Services, and the Highway Department in their response to this latest storm. I think that it was a remarkable response by every one of those departments and the other agencies that may have been involved, the fire, local fire departments. And, and I don't know if the State Patrol was involved in that. But everybody responded. And Crow Wing Power got power back up to these people in a very short period of time. I think we should be very proud of, of our emergency response. And Clayton and the job that he did over at the Emergency Services Office. So, I just want to acknowledge that. Chief Deputy, thank you very much for everything over there.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with us, as long as we've got a minute left?
No, we got fifteen minutes.
I'd just like to piggyback on your comments. And that is, the team really worked out well. Clayton did a great job. That was his first real major event in Crow Wing County. It was phenomenal. He's still working on that today. He just gave me an update yesterday that we hit the state threshold for funding, for costs for all the co-ops and the townships out there. So, he's still working diligently to help those people that are still in need right now. So that's really great to see. I can't say enough about how well he responded. So, thank you for that.
Clayton did note that the estimated impact of damages at this point is about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred. So there are still some amounts coming in from other agencies. But that's the, the estimate at this point.
And, Deb, can you just point out the, the fact that I believe, what is the threshold for state? And what is the threshold for us for federal?
So for federal, the federal indicator is three hundred and four thousand. And the state level is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is up fifty percent of the federal level is what the state threshold is.
And then, so if it's the state threshold, it's seventy-five thousand, seventy-five percent reimbursement. And then, if it reaches the federal, it's
I think it's a hundred percent.
I think it is a hundred percent.
I think at a hundred, at, at the federal level, I believe it's a hundred percent reimbursement.
Well, thank you very much for
Yep.
Thank you.
Everything.
Yep.
We're adjourned?
We are.
Is that a motion thing we have to do?